Good evening and welcome to the regular meeting of the Revere School Committee. Please rise and salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, to the United States of America, and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its form.
Mr. Feranti.
Here.
Ms. Gravellisi.
Here.
Mr. McGuire.
Here.
Mrs. Rizzo.
Here.
Mr. Sinella.
Here.
Ms. Ty.
Here.
Mayor Orego.
Here. We'll get into the superintendent's report. Dr. Kelly?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have several items on the superintendent's report this evening. The first one is a presentation from the Rumney Marsh Academy about the Massachusetts Consortium for Innovative Educational Assessment. And this is a program that we entered into last year. The Rumney was one of our pioneering schools in the MCIEA work. The work focuses on project-based assessments and performance assessments for students that hopefully lends, allows students to have more voice in their learning and more voice in how they demonstrate their knowledge and understanding. So, we are very pleased to have Dr. Galucci and his team here. I'll ask Dr. Galucci to come up first if he doesn't mind and introduce everybody. And then we'll have our presentation from our students and their teacher, Mrs. Cinelli.
It's a pleasure to be here this evening. Tonight, you're going to hear about some work that we participated in over the course of last year. We're going to hear from Ashley Cinelli, who is now our literacy coach, but participated in this work as an English Language Arts teacher. And then we're going to hear from Gabriela Mogavero and Naomi Demaro, who also participated in this work as students. So, without further ado, I'm going to bring Ashley up to introduce our work from last year.
So, our initial work with MCIEA.
Just pull that down.
Oh, thank you. Focused around first, understanding their definition of quality performance assessment and also really defining what makes an effective performance task. So, we spent some of those first meetings as a cohort, learning about the different tools and resources they would be able to support our school with. Equity is really a huge focus of what MCIEA promotes in their creation of these assessments. And thinking about performance tasks as multi-step assessments, the criteria and expectation should be really clear for kids. And we want students to be able to not only transfer those skills, but then go on to apply them independently into some kind of original product or problem solving. So, before we created our performance task, we met as a team with our MCIE coach and our principal, Dr. Galucci. And we worked on one of their resources. It was called Tool Eight. But this really made sure that our assignment was aligned to standards. It was aligned to 21st century skills. It helped us to consider the accommodations we should consider. It also helped us to create implementation resources. So, our team was made up of four teachers and our literacy coach, but our whole department would be taking on this assessment. So, it was something we wanted to really think about in the planning in ways we could roll this out to an entire department. In essence, so that an entire school would be taking this assessment, grade six to eight. We validated that performance task with members of MCIA from other schools cohorts. We presented it. We went through protocols to get feedback. We did the same for our rubric, which you have copies of. And we also shared with our PLG. Then it came time to actually give this performance task that we spent months validating and creating and revising. Things that stood out and made this performance task different is that we were able to model for students and really take time to introduce the task and review the expectations with them. There were also opportunities for students to independently revise their work. So, these were steps that aren't really associated typically with standardized testing, but it was something we got to do through this assessment. And these are best practices. These are things we're doing in our classroom all the time. So, being able to apply this to something as formal as a performance task really felt right for a lot of our teachers. We also were able to plan some formative assessments that you could do prior to giving the performance task. And again, these are best practices. It's stuff we encourage. And now, having kind of the whole year to reflect on, knowing one of our performance tasks in advance, is really changing the way people are already approaching narrative in their classrooms. So, it's very intentional as well. So, our project had three components. We had, the students would write a personal narrative. They would also complete a visual representation of that narrative and present it to the class. And then we also had the option of culture night when all of the projects were completed. So, the options for our personal narrative. Students had four choices here, and one of our goals as a team was to make sure it was a really inclusive and engaging project. So, we wanted to make sure that any student could find a topic within one of these. So, we, some of the options were the experience of themselves or someone they know immigrating to the country, describing a family or cultural tradition, explaining what it means to be American, or explaining what the city of Revere means to them. And we used some of our teen time still to even troubleshoot past these four, where if you have a student who is just not connecting to this prompt, what can you do to see if they're still meeting the standard? What are some options for those kids? This also ties into our building's work with UDL, which really emphasizes choice as a way to increase student engagement. In our options for the visual presentation, kids were basically told, "You can illustrate this story however you would like." We were told, "As long as it's directly connected to details from their essay, anything would work for their visual display." And then they presented that to the class. And part of the presentation that was really important to us got back to those 21st century skills of cultural competency. And we wanted kids to share different cultures and traditions and backgrounds with each other. And we really had a lot of great anecdotes afterwards of kids saying, "Oh, that's something your family does. Mine does it too." And kids who thought they knew each other really getting a deeper understanding of each other as well. Next, there are our rubrics, which you have copies of. They're a little hard to read on the PowerPoint, but this was a process for us, and our rubrics are really still under revision. Choosing the standards was something our team spent a lot of time on. It's easy to just keep adding them in there. We chose to focus on two in depth. We focused on standard three, which was about writing narratives. And we really drilled down that standard into the rubric. And we also focused on standard for speaking and listening four and drilled that one down as well. We're still working. We wanted both student-friendly rubrics that were still rigorous. So, we're working on some of the language still. We decided to kind of leave it open as you go across from exceeds to does not meet standard. So, some teachers filled in their notes on that, and that was something that we got to go over a lot in PLG as well. And then we finally had our culture night. So, culture night was optional. It was after school. We should have some pictures of it in there. Yes. So, we had kids decorate the cafeteria. We invited all families in the school. We had about 160 people RSVP, and I think we had more that night, too. So, it was an option to bring some kind of cultural or family dish. So, people came and we ate. We had the kids' projects displayed all over the lobby. We had their essays displayed by teacher, so parents could come see what they've been working on. It was something the kids really owned and helped out with a lot, too. Teachers were there to talk to parents. It was just a great community-building experience for us and our kids as well. And then after the performance assessment, we scored them as a team, and our team logged our data for analysis. We also calibrated scoring with the MCIEA other cohorts. So, they, we did some blind scoring with them through the use of a protocol. We also presented our work to Cohort Two over the summer, so to get even more feedback and think about how we can modify it for next year and keep moving on this. And lastly, we polled our students and asked them to reflect on the experience and collected their feedback. So, I've included a few quotes from kids just after kind of asking them, "What did you like about it? What did you learn? What might you do differently?" And some great stuff that stood out to me and some of the ones I pulled here. The presentation was a really big part for a lot of the kids when they were reflecting on it, but so many kids said that they felt proud that they did it, that at first it seemed like something, "I don't want to do this." But talking about themselves and hearing about each other was like a great bonding experience even as a class. And then a lot of kids did their own research, which wasn't required, but sat down with their families, interviewed people, and really got to know more about themselves and family members they might not talk to anyways. So, we saw a lot of positives from that, but I believe you'll hear even more about that from the source. I think there's one on the next slide. If you just want a moment to read those, I won't read them to you. All right, so first, we'll have Gabriela come up. They're going to read a short excerpt from the narratives that they wrote and then tell us a little about their experience.
So, hi, I'm Gabby Mogavero. Thank you for inviting me. I'm from the Art May, and I'm an eighth-grade student. My essay is about my grandmother's story of immigrating to America from a small town in Sicily. It explains how hard it was for my nana leaving her family behind at the age of 21 with her newlywed husband, my grandfather, to the unknown world of America. This is different than writing for a standardized test because with personal essays, you have the freedom to be able to be creative and take risks that you wouldn't necessarily do on a standardized test. Personally, for me, on standardized tests, I just wanted to write an essay that will guarantee me an A. But with personal essays or narratives, you're allowed to experiment with your writing, making it more authentic and efficient. When writing this, I learned more about my grandma's emotions and feelings towards immigrating to America. Also, in general, I learned more about how hard it was and still is for all immigrants to leave behind their home and family. So, here's an excerpt from my essay. "Ti amo," Rosa cried, clutching onto her mother. Rosa wrapped her arms around her mother's waist and buried her face into her mother's soft sweater, trying to hide the tears that burst out of her. Rosa's mother stroked her black hair that was tied into a bun and held onto her tightly. Tears watered in Rosa's eyes as she held onto her mother tighter, hoping she could salvage every last moment with her. Rosa would be leaving the woman that she lay next to every night as she fell asleep. She would be leaving the person that loved her the most in the entire world. She would be leaving the place where her father had died many years ago. Rosa didn't feel like a grown young woman married. She felt like she was still the baby going to a whole new scary world, but she knew, at least in front of her mother, she had to be strong. Rosa brushed away her tears with one free hand and let go of her mother slowly. Rosa saw that her mama's eyes were filled with tears, too. Her soft brown eyes were full of pain and fear for her youngest daughter was leaving her. Thank you.
And then next up, we will hear from Naomi.
Okay, so, hi, I'm Naomi, first off. Second, my essay is about a Chinese holiday that me and my family celebrate every year, and it's called Tomb Sweeping Day. And it's part of the King Ming Festival. But honestly, before I did this essay, I didn't even know what it was called because every year, we just kind of did it. We didn't really talk about it. No one really told me about it. Every time I asked my mom about it, she was like, "I don't know what it's called." And then we just like, kind of just went on with it and like... So, for the cultural essay part, when we were talking about a holiday that we did every year, I was just like, "Hey, want to do some more research on this one?" And so, now I like actually know what it's called. That's, that's a good thing. Why it's celebrated, which to, which is to respect the dead and stuff and like say hi every once in a while, and that's what I learned. I'm sorry, I'm so awkward. This essay is different than most essays because you can write on a more personal level than usual. Like usually, when you're writing an essay and it's like on some kind of book that you've been reading for a while, or like if it's a part essay, you get like one paragraph and you, during like those standardized tests, you only get like an hour to evaluate it and then like write a narrative in your essay on it. Or if you're doing an essay in class, you have like two to days or like four days or like a week about, on it of like research and like evaluation of what it's about. But like when you're doing it based on your life, you have your whole life's like research on it. You know what it's about. You know more about the topic than you probably ever would know about a book that you just read in class or something that you're probably not really engaged in than something that you know more about, you like talking about, you celebrate with your family every year, or like if you're really patriotic to be an American, I guess you could have done a paragraph about that, too. But yeah, I feel like this speaks to students on a better level than just some paragraph that we have to read and write an essay about. All right. Without further ado, I'm going to read that paragraph, guys. "My father popped the trunk of the car. We all grabbed bushels of flowers, a metal bucket, and boxes of food, and we trekked through the rain towards my grandfather's grave. It was April 4th, and the sky was gray and cloudy as rain fell upon the graveyard. We all wore rubber boots and raincoats, and most of us held umbrellas, except for my mother and father, who had their hands already full of flowers. We arrived at the grave, and everyone began to put their stuff down and set things up. Hi, Gung Gung, my sister and I said to our grandfather. Hello, my grandmother said in her best English. She mostly, she mostly speaks Chinese, but sometimes she would say things in English at random times." Yay, I did it!
Did you have any questions for us? Me or them, them are interesting.
I mean, other than you girls did wonderful, wonderful presentations, but I'm being nosey. Naomi, when is your holiday? Is it a solar? Do you determine it by the solar, or is it every April that you have this party?
It's every April, and we go to the cemetery, and we basically like bring food and stuff, and we bring this metal bucket, and we bring this sort of like fake money stuff. It's weird, but you put it in the bucket and you burn it, and it's sort of like you're sending it to heaven, so they can like pay their heaven rent and... Yeah.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Ms. Chau.
Well, actually, that's not really so strange because there's another custom that's around that people go and they pray for the dead to sort of get them out of any punishment that is, might be happening to them. Not that I believe that, but... So, these are customs that are wonderful and so wonderful that we share. I did not know that, but I think of the Mexican Day of the Dead and others that are similar. And I bet that everybody in your school was delighted to hear it, too. And Gabriela, I mean, yours was just wonderful. I started to try to read these, you know, but I need to concentrate on them. And I, I think from the beginning, you wedded my curiosity, you know, unbelievably. So, I'm really looking forward to it. I bet you had a good time watching them develop in this period of time.
Yes. It was being able to watch a whole class present stories like these, you really just developed even better relationships and connections with your kids. And it's something we talked about possibly moving even earlier in the year. We did this in May, and a lot of teachers, after kind of reflecting on it, said, "I wish we had started the year with this. I wish we had jumped in even earlier." So, that's something we took away from feedback with MCIEA, too.
Very interesting. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
You did a great job.
Great job.
So, thank you all very much for that presentation. It was excellent. One of the things that we'd like to try to do through the school committee meeting is highlight the great work that our students and our teachers are doing, and that was just a fantastic presentation. It's great to see these kids really on the cutting edge of educational, serve them well as they move on through the school system and into college. The next piece of the superintendent's report is an update on enrollment, and this is something that we've been talking about for the last several years. And as the committee knows well, we've been seeing a steady increase in the number of students enrolled in the Revere Public Schools over the last many years. And we're at a place now where we're on the cusp of reaching a milestone for Revere High School and seeing the enrollment there exceed 2,000 students for the first time in many, many, many years. I know that when this building first opened, it housed about 2,300 high school students, but we've been far away from that number, at least in my tenure in the Revere Public Schools, which is now over 20 years. We do have some challenges at the elementary level with class sizes that are approaching 30. We're doing better than we were last year with fewer classes that are actually at or above 30. We have just three this, two this year, and they're at the Hill School. But our increased staffing has helped decrease those levels across the district. I wish I could say that I was confident that things will stay that way for the remainder of the school year, but I suspect that as more and more students enroll, we're going to see other classrooms creep up over that 30 mark. We do have a number of classes at the high school that exceed 30 already. It's a little bit less of a concern having a class of 30 students at the high school level than it is at the elementary level, but it's still not an optimal situation. And, you know, one of our greatest needs across the district is the relief from additional space for classrooms. We've talked, I think, just about, at just about every meeting I've been at for the last year and a half about the need for a new high school. And building a facility that's off of the current footprint would allow this building to become a central middle school, which would be larger than actually the three middle schools that we currently have combined, and allow us to repurpose at least a couple of those middle school buildings into new elementary schools, alleviating the overcrowding at that level. So, I still see that as a significant need. It's a testament to the city, what a great city this is, that families are choosing to move here to raise their children. And it's a testament to the school department as well, I don't mind saying, but it's a challenge that we need to address as a community as well. So, I'll keep you updated on enrollment as we proceed through the year and ongoing. The next update I have is on school and district improvement plan information. Schools are currently working on their school improvement plans, and our curriculum directors are working on district improvement plans that are focused by content area. We'll be sharing those at an upcoming school committee meeting in the next month or so. We need to talk to the committee to establish dates that are workable for those presentations, but they will be carried live on, or carried, not live, but carried taped for television so that parents can see exactly what's going on in each school. We do encourage parents to participate in the planning process. You can do that by becoming active in your school's leadership team, and if you have questions about that, you should contact your child's principal, who can tell you more about those meetings, when they're scheduled, and how you can have input on the school improvement plan. All of the plans are linked to the district's three big goals, which we've been, we're in our second year, working on now. And those, of course, are community engagement, teaching all students, and assessment of and assessment for student learning. The presentation that we just saw from the Rumney Marsh Academy is an example of assessment for student learning because the kids were learning as, through the assessment process. So, please, if you're so inclined, if you have a little bit of time, please volunteer on your school improvement council so that you can have input into the school improvement plan, and we look forward to presenting those in the, in the coming weeks as we get into the school year. The next item on the superintendent's report is a review of the back-to-school process, which we were very pleased, was very successful this year. We feel it went exceedingly smoothly. We did, as is typical, have a couple of hiccups with bus timing issues, and we're working on that right now with our vendor, Healy Bus. The one place that we had a significant problem was at the Paul Revere School, where one of the buses that was transporting other students was arriving late to pick those kids up and get them home. But we have contracted another bus to make sure those little ones are getting home on time. So, that situation has been fixed. We're working through the PTO. We're going to be meeting next month at our PTO meeting, which is October 4th at 5:30 in the Learning Commons at Revere High School. Julie Demaro from Safe Roots to School will be here to talk to us about crosswalks and other safety measures the city has put in place to help ensure that our kids are getting to school safely. So, we look forward to that. One thing that I want to mention that we thought was really great this year, we had our back-to-school nights at each school last week, the Meet the Teacher Night, and every single school reported an increase in parent participation, which was terrific. We were really thrilled with those results. We know that without a strong partnership between parents, the community, and the school department, our kids won't succeed the way that they can. So, we really appreciate that support. We appreciate the parents coming in, and we look forward to more parental participation so that we can foster that student success. We're really happy about that. And I just want to take a minute to remind everybody that we do have a half-day tomorrow, Wednesday, and that's so that the teachers can have professional development in the afternoon. They have principal meetings in their buildings. And then also, there is no school on Thursday or Friday throughout the Revere Public Schools, and that's so that our families can celebrate Rosh Hashanah, those who do. So, half-day tomorrow. The dismissal time is a little bit different at different schools, so go look at that school, your school's website or your principal's Twitter feed, and you'll see the exact dismissal time for your children. And then no school on Thursday and Friday. The last piece of the superintendent's report, Dr. Mocaba is actually going to present, just to give us an update on the Revere Educators Leadership Board and the work that that group has been doing and where they are currently. As, as the committee knows, the Revere Educators Leadership Board is one of the major decision-making bodies for the school district. When we identify a problem, one of the councils will tackle the problem by conducting research, visiting other school districts, collecting data, and then suggest ways to improve practice so that we can fix whatever that problem is. They then speak to the, to the board, and the board helps them work through that, through that situation. So, I'll toss it over to Dr. Mocaba, who's probably, I think I just went through half of our presentation, but... So, I'll start talking now. Danielle?
Thank you. As Dr. Kelly had just stated, we are underway another year for our Revere Educators Leadership Board. The structure of the REL consists of our board, which oversees, and as Dr. Kelly said, guides and advises and approves the problem-solving measures that our councils propose to us. There are six leadership councils, the organizational structure council, adult professional culture, professional development, educator growth, which looks at our supervision and evaluation model, recruitment, hiring, induction, mentoring, and placement, which is actually a combination of two councils. They started off as two different councils, but we combined them as one, and the teacher leadership and career ladder council. In addition, we have one subcommittee that was created two years ago. It's the Colleague to Colleague Subcommittee, and they are It's the Colleague-to-Colleague Subcommittee, and they are working on one of our new pilots that I'm going to talk about next. So just to recap some of last year's successes, our Grading Subcommittee developed a Core Beliefs document that was proposed to the RELB. The RELB Board approved this document, and it was introduced to the entire staff at our opening day meeting as a working document for the district for this school year. Our goal is to revise that and finalize that document by the end of this year. The next success that came out of the RELB Council work last year was the Organizational Structure Council planned, developed, proposed an ELL newcomer pilot at the Garfield Elementary School, and that is beginning this year at Garfield Elementary School. The Recruitment, Hiring, Induction, Mentoring, and Placement held a successful career fair this year. This was after two years of being on hiatus due to our limited hiring that had happened over the last two years due to our budget constraints. So it was great that they were able to bring this back as a measure to gather the best for our students here in Revere. The next success that I want to talk about is the Teacher Leadership and Career Ladder, worked in conjunction with the Five District Partnership, which is another one of our partnerships that we have with Chelsea Everett Winthrop and Revere. And they created this EdTalks piece of a Celebration of Learning event that happened in May of last year. It was very well-attended by all five districts. In addition, one of our EdTalk presenters, Elthea Torrenzi, also spoke to all staff at our opening day meeting, and that was very well-received. And this is something that they look forward to refining and participating in this year. The next thing is the Colleague-to-Colleague Program. So for several years, the two councils, the Teacher Leadership and Career Ladder and the Professional Development councils, worked in conjunction to develop our C2C pilot. This cross-council work culminated in an approved three-year pilot for our Colleague-to-Colleague program that is beginning this year. This is where our four consulting teachers will be working with participating teachers across the district at different grade bands, and we look forward to seeing, analyzing, and reflecting on their success this year. The Adult Professional Culture had two milestones in their work for this year. First, they instituted a, several gatherings, the social events for the adults to support that professional culture in the district. And the second was the creation of Bud's Book, which is our communication, a new communication tool that we have within the district. As we start this year, councils are going to have their first meeting on Wednesday, September 20th. We have begun our recruitment of new members. This is something these councils are, evolve every year. Each year, we have a steady body of people that participate and choose to lead, and we also encourage new educators to be involved. This is a wonderful leadership opportunity. This year, we have approximately 115 educators on the six councils, the subcommittee, and the RELB Board. Information we will be passing along so others can read what these councils are doing. Their minutes and agendas will be posted on our new school website.
Thank you, Dr. Mokaba. Any questions? So that concludes the superintendent's report. I'll note that the next item on the agenda is the Student Representative Report. And just to share with the committee and the community at large, the high school will be hosting their elections next week, and so we will have a student member seated for the October meeting.
So the next item on our agenda is public participation. Ralph, three minutes.
I have the time.
We won't start it yet. Hold on. We'll let you get settled.
This will be very fast. Ralph DeChico, 49, Washington Street. It's something that I wanted to bring up at the PTO citywide meeting, but I couldn't be there because of conflict with the Commission on Disabilities meeting, because we had to reschedule. But it's something that I wanted to discuss, to bring here for this meeting, and hopefully get it on the agenda. I thought of this last year, and I did talk to a few principals, that we have query checks for the individual schools. And I just wanted to put it out there for some, for some information or feedback that if there is a way that the city could possibly create a centralized database for a query check, because of parents that have children in numerous schools, we're creating numerous query checks for the same families, and it is creating a lot of paperwork and a lot of work for the police department. So it's just something that maybe there's a way to create a centralized database within the school department, instead of having each school have their, their own query check for the families that have numerous children in different schools.
Thank you, Ralph. And Dr. Kelly, if you want to chime in.
Yeah, so we do, we, they are done centrally here, out of my office, and all of the requests come up from the schools and are actually processed through the superintendent's office. So any parent who's already done a query check can just say to the principal, I've already done one for the other school. We keep a record. The principal can just ask, and we have a running record. We can say, yes, that person's cleared.
That's not known out there, because they're making you fill out separate query checks. So maybe that's something that has to be told to them, because parents are filling them out for each individual school.
Yeah, and we'll, we'll communicate that more clearly to principals as well, so they understand, that they know that there's a student, for example, at the Paul Revere and at the Susan B. Anthony, there's only need for one query check.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. Told you it'd be fast.
Thank you, Ralph.
Thank you, Washmont.
The next item on our agenda is a report of subcommittees.
What about the consent calendar?
Oh.
Communications.
My apologies. We have the consent calendar. Are there any items on the consent calendar that a member would like to take off the consent calendar?
Miss Ty is requesting that we take off communications.
So we will take, want to take up all of the other except for communications?
Right.
So we'll have a roll call on the consent agenda minus communications.
Mr. Frandi?
Yes.
Ms. Gravellisi?
Yes.
Mr. McGuire?
Yes.
Mrs. Rizzo?
Yes.
Mr. Sinella?
Yes.
Ms. Ty?
Yes.
Mayor Arigo?
Yes. And now we will move to the communications portion of the consent agenda. Ms. Gravellisi?
Thank you, Mayor Arigo. Okay, communications. From Matt Cruz regarding the Community School Petty Cash Account. At your convenience, please request that the school committee authorize and transfer of authority of the $300 after-school partnership petty cash account from Megan Carey, Two-Forty Fatty, the City of Revere's Community School Director. The petty cash account would continue to be managed with clear documentation of all disbursements and reimbursements through the requisition and purchase order process. So move.
Roll call.
Mr. Frandi?
Yes.
Ms. Gravellisi?
Yes.
Mr. McGuire?
Yes.
Mrs. Rizzo?
Yes.
Mr. Sinella?
Yes.
Ms. Ty?
Yes.
Mayor Arigo?
Yes.
Mr. Sinella?
Dr. Kelly?
So currently, the Transportation Department runs some small purchases through the superintendent's office petty cash account. This would establish their own accounts, that they could pay for it on their own, and there are incidentals that just happen from day to day. It might be a purchase of oil to replace oil in a, in one of the vehicles, or some other small order items. They're typically not more than $10 or $15.
It's a business state. It sounds like it's unlimited, whatever's in the fund.
It has a maximum of $300.
Which is, yeah, yeah. And that's the, that is similar to all petty cash accounts in the district.
It's not a revolving account?
No.
Thank you.
Roll call.
Mr. Frandi?
Yes.
Ms. Gravellisi?
Yes.
Mr. McGuire?
Yes.
Mrs. Rizzo?
Yes.
Mr. Sinella?
Yes.
Ms. Ty?
Yes.
Mayor Arigo?
Yes.
Ms. Gravellisi?
Thank you, Mayor Arigo. This next communication is from Dr. Diane Kelly regarding 100% attendance for the 2016-17 school year. Dr. Kelly is proud to announce that 62 employees of the Revere Public Schools had 100% attendance for the 2016-17 school year. This number represents approximately 6% of the entire staff. Achieving this record of perfect attendance in any school year is no easy task. There are the ever-present colds, flus, family illness, et cetera. Those who achieve these goals are dedicated and committed to our students as much as anyone. We offer our congratulations and gratitude for their dedication. And the 62 names are attached, but we're not going to read them today. So move.
All in favor, all opposed?
Okay, let's see. The next communication is from Jonathan Ferrara. Dear School Committee Members, we would like to formally request permission to discard old or broken technology equipment. The bulk of the hardware we are requesting to dispose of is in excess of eight years old and primarily used in the computer repair class at the high school. The items are either no longer functioning, no longer have necessary minimum requirements to run current software, or are no longer relevant in the commuter, computer repair classes due to their age. So move.
Roll call.
Mr. Frandi?
Yes.
Ms. Gravellisi?
Yes.
Next?
So this one's tabled.
Oh, this one's tabled. Okay. And the next one is a late communication to the school committee from the Election Department. Dear Honorable Members, this year, the local election will be held on Tuesday, November 7th, 2017. As such, the Board of Election Commissions respectfully requests the use of the following schools on those dates to conduct the elections. The Garfield Magnet School foyer, Abraham Lincoln School foyer, Revere High School foyer. Prior to 2:00 PM on the day before the election, the onsite custodian will be provided with an auto-mark handicap voting machine along with other voting equipment that he will need to install and/or set up. A letter has been sent to each custodian informing them of the date of the election and requesting them to contact this office if they need supplies for Election Day. It is respectfully requested that those buildings open at 6:00 AM the morning of the election to accept the delivery of the ballots, the tabulator, and the supply box. Thank you for your continued support. Diane Kelly.
Please, on file.
And those are all the communications today.
Thank you, Ms. Gravellisi. The next item on the agenda is a report of subcommittees, which we do not have any. No old business, any new business? School committee interests, Ms. Ty.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to offer my thanks and gratitude to the city and to Carl Swenson for completing a beautiful ramp into the Beauchamp School. When people would come before, there was no way to get a wheelchair or a baby carriage in, and now it's built beautifully and it's right outside. So thanks to him, thanks to everybody for having that done. They're very happy with it. Secondly, for those of you who are historians and who read in the Revere Journal every day about the history of what happened 10 years ago, 20 years ago, 30, 40, 50, I read it all the time, because to me, it's not ancient history, it's experience. So 30 years ago, this, the begat, beginning of the school year, and Jack Moska, who's up there taking notes, will remember this quite well. The teachers of Revere went on strike. It was a terrible, terrible time. We started school after Labor Day. We were supposed to start, the teachers had meetings on Tuesday, and we were supposed to start school on Wednesday. So the night before, we had a meeting, and I say "we," I'm referring to the Revere teachers at this point, and we had a meeting scheduled with a mediator and the school committee right in the library here at Revere High School. The meeting was scheduled, I think, at 6:00 at night, and we were there, talking back and forth and back and forth. And at 3:00 in the morning, we realized that we were not going to be able to come to any kind of settlement. We did have a meeting scheduled at 6:00 in the morning on the next day. So for the rest of the time, there was just no talking, because at that point, everyone was exhausted, and there was no way we were going to get anything done. So we went to the moose at 6:00 in the morning and took a vote, and the vote was to go on strike. And we were on strike Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday. Ralph, you were probably a kid in the schools at that time.
I was a junior.
Probably you too. So, Susan? Yeah? And, yeah, so. There were only seven teachers still working in the system. The other one besides Jack Moska, one who was here tonight, was Albert Mogavero, was still working at that time.
Second.
Anyway, it was an awful time. The mediator was there. We did work something out. There were two major issues. One was common planning time, only we didn't call it that then. It was time for elementary school teachers to get together with their peers and decide how they were going to help kids succeed in school. But there was no, there had not been any of that time scheduled. And the second one was money. It's always money. At that time, there were many teacher strikes that were going on throughout the state of Massachusetts. Remember, this was 1987. I blame the state for that, that we had the strikes, because it is the responsibility of the state to fund education. I mean, obviously, the individual cities and towns do it, but it is their responsibility in the Constitution to do that. They finally realized that they were not meeting their obligation, and they came up with education reform. And with education reform came a good deal of money, came, came an increase in standards, came more accountability, but came a lot of money back to the system. I was lucky enough to be the superintendent and to be the beneficiary of that, because we had cut out all art classes, all music classes. We had classes routinely of 28, 29, 30, up to 35, routinely. And we had a real influx of, and of course, the exams came with it too, but it was a real influx of money at that time. So we're now at a new crossroads, and I think we need some, and we need both the state and the city to take the responsibility that it has. We desperately needed education reform too. We certainly know how much we need it, because we lost so much money last year as a result of the new way of defining who was actually poor, and we lost the money for over 2,000 kids. So we certainly need a new education reform, that being just part of it. And we also need a push for the city, because as you mentioned earlier, we can't educate kids. We're going up on too many of these. And I love to hear about the economic development that we're having in the city, but remember, we have the spirits, the brains, the ideas of all these children that we have to take care of in the future. So I hope that the city will be out there and get us a new high school. Did you know I was coming to that point? Thank you. It was a very sad time, and we all learned a lesson, that the only way we cannot have anything like that happen again is to sit and communicate over and over again. The lines of communication to everyone throughout the city need to be open all the time. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ty. And I can't agree more with your statements. I do, you know, I know we've had a lot of conversations about the fact that we do need a new high school. The city is committed to making that happen, and we've had a number of conversations with the superintendent to get creative, I think, to, to think about how, how we can get there. I do have to say that knowing the history is obviously important, and the fact that we're in such a better place 30 years later is certainly
So I hope that the city will be out there and get us a new high school. Did you know I was coming to that point? Thank you. It was a very sad time, and we all learned a lesson that the only way we cannot have anything like that happen again is to sit and communicate over and over again. The lines of communication to everyone throughout the city need to be open all the time. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Thai. And I can't agree more with your statements. I do, you know, I know we've had a lot of conversations about the fact that we do need a new high school. The city is committed to making that happen. And we've had a number of conversations with the superintendent to get creative, I think, to think about how we can get there. I do have to say that knowing the history is obviously important. And the fact that we're in such a better place 30 years later is certainly a testament, I think, to the work that's done here on Tuesday nights. I think it's the work that is done by every single school committee member each day in forging relationships and making sure that we don't get, we don't move backwards. And certainly, it's a testament to the great work that the superintendent has done, in terms of building relationships with all of the teachers, with all of the unions. And as mayor, I have a special appreciation for union negotiations and all the fun that goes along with them. But, and they can get, you know, they obviously can get testy, but when everyone's pushing in the same